Call to order. Dr. Scott Ripley, Superintendent, myself will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag solution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open Public Meetings Act, state. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law is enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the Clerk of the boroughs of Branchville and Sussex, and the towns of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Wantage. Mission statement. High Point Regional High School, in partnership with staff, family, and community, is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible and productive members of a diverse society. Now I'll read the final election results. The November 5th, 2024 official election results as per countywide report, November 20th, 2024. Branchville Borough, Thomas Van Stone, three hundred sixty-six votes. Frankfurt Township, Larissa Laura Longberg, two thousand two hundred ninety-four votes. Lafayette Township, Dana Gaul, write-in of eleven, or fourteen votes. Sussex Borough, Nanette Fendino Diaz, six hundred ninety-one votes. I will now administer the oaths of office to Laura Longberg, Dana Gaul, and Nanette Fendino Diaz. Each of you has been given the oath. For school board members pursuant to NJSA-ETA, NJSA forty-one, one dash one. If you will stand, please raise your right hand. You may read along at your own. You do not have to read or repeat after me, but please read the statement inserting your name, and reads both, and the asterisks are not required. It is certainly your choice to do so. So, I-
I, Nanette Fendino Diaz, do solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and his state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
You may read the second statement now.
I, Nanette Fendino Diaz, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen four dash one, or disqualified due to an admission of a crime or offense listed in NJSEETA twelve dash one, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Very good, congratulations. When you have a moment, please sign those so that we can take possession of them, so that we can have them in the board office. You don't have to do it in a second, but in a moment we'll be treated to a short executive session meeting. All right. Next up on our agenda, number seven. Election of officials. I will now open the floor for nominations for president.
I nominate Queen Don.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Now that the nominations have been received, if there are none, then a motion to call the nominations is requested.
Motion.
Second.
Now, seeing none others, we shall call a roll call vote for the election of the president.
Mrs. Diaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Longberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Orsi?
Yes.
Mrs. Wise?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Palazza?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Good sir, thank you for yours. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank, I'm humbled by, by the support that I received from this board to continue in this position, and I look forward to a stellar year with all of you. Thank you again. So, I guess with that then, I get to open up for nominations for position of vice president of the High Point Regional High School Board of Education.
I nominate Mrs. Schuman.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I guess I opened up, are there any other nominations? Tom is on the, on the- I guess we should ask where you're interested.
I kind of did that after the fact, I'm sorry.
So, following, how is that that you went? We get the closed nominations? If they're steg, then I have a motion to close nominations.
Motion. Second.
Okay. With that, I guess we'll take the roll call vote.
Okay. Mrs. Palazza?
Yes.
Mrs. Diaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Wise?
Yes.
Mrs. Longberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Okay. So, the president will declare that Mrs. Schuman is now vice president of the High Point Regional Board of Education. So, with those matters settled, let's move to a roll call for attendance first.
Okay. Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mrs. Diaz?
Here.
Mrs. Gaul?
Here.
Mrs. Longberg?
Here.
Mrs. Orsi?
Here.
Mrs. Palazza?
Here.
Mrs. Schuman?
Here.
Mr. Van Stone? Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Ripley?
Here. Okay, now a motion will be made that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education will enter executive session to provide an update on legal personnel and negotiation items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. It is anticipated that no action will be taken, and the executive session will last no more than twenty minutes. The board will then reconvene in public session. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and is that the session in board?
We are back in public session. First off, there's a public comments for our first section of the evening on agenda items only. And of course, with the Public Meetings Act, we'll open for public comments. At this time, each speaker should state his or her name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than 45 minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. And we have, as typical, two means by which to address the board. Here in person and our virtual email address where we have no comments being posted. We have no comments waiting in queue there. So, no public comments. May I have a motion to close public comments? Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the first one is a recommendation that the board appoints someone as a delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association. I guess we normally have to have a second before we discuss this, but we haven't really picked it. We haven't really discussed any of this as of yet. But to give some background information, delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association is a position that there are two delegation assemblies every year that happen typically at Mercer County Community College. So, the delegate would be asked to potentially attend those. I have in the past attended two. I don't know if we've had anybody else attend any of those assemblies. It's not required. It is just our... It is our opportunity to have things heard at a higher level within New Jersey schools. Are you interested in being a delegate?
Yeah, the next one's in May, right? They just had it December 7th.
Should be May, right?
Yeah. The big one they just sent there, big one, December 7th.
So... So then, I'm going to read the motion. It is a recommendation that the board appoints Tina Palasek as delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Okay, you can vote on that.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn? Yes. Okay, and we also appoint an alternate delegate in case the delegate is unable to attend. One thing I forgot to mention is that any board can send any number of people to the delegate assembly. You can attend it as a school board member, but you can only vote if you are the designated delegate at the assembly. So, the alternate delegate can certainly attend, but you wouldn't have voting privileges if the... if Tina were to go along with it. But it's interesting because it's very, very formal. I mean, Robert's Rules to the Max.
And it gets heated from what I understand.
It can. There's a very...
There's like a lot of...
There's some interesting policy decisions that have been discussed at the time that I've been... But it's a long track that's going through. Anybody interested in that today? Allison.
All right.
Okay, so I'm going to read the motion that I will move. It's a recommendation that the board appoints Allison Orsi as alternate delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association. May I have a second?
Second. Okay.
Now, any discussion? Tina, you can vote on that, please.
Okay. Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn? Yes. Okay, the next two deal with a more local component of the New Jersey School Boards. The first one is a delegate to the Sussex County School Boards Association that meets roughly every other month. Sometimes virtual, sometimes in person. I'm going to ask, did I put myself in that role only because I currently serve as...
President.
The president for the Sussex County School Boards Association. Doesn't necessarily mean anything except I'm going to be there anyway, so I must be the duck.
Second.
Okay. Well, I'll read it. It's a recommendation that the board appoint Lane Dunn as delegate to the Sussex County School Boards Association. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Thank you, Lane.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn? Yes. They... Yeah, we've actually now moved to... Well, no, we've been there, but they were not available last time. So, we were at the Wolf Course.
College.
Farmstead. Yeah. And then, oh, the last one was at the college. We actually, there was a very interesting program about baking and things at the last one. You were away, so you were...
I... I didn't go.
You were away.
You were away.
Okay, so number four is a recommendation to appoint somebody as an alternate delegate to the Sussex County School Boards Association. There? Okay. And I've seen Ms. Longberg there. So, I'll read that. It is a recommendation that the board appoints Clara Longberg as alternate delegate to the Sussex County School Boards Association. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, vote on that, please.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn? Yes. Okay, moving along. The next one is a recommendation to appoint somebody to the Sussex County Ed Services Commission. It is a... I believe it's a requirement, right, that we have somebody designated to be a representative to this commission, as do all other schools in the county, right? Because it's made up of representatives from all the schools. Ms. Palasek, have you been on this before, right? So, you can tell us a little bit about it, because I am the one who...
You have to be there for their budget vote, and everybody sits around. So, every school who has a vote gets the way in on what their budget is. And I... There was only one meeting that was called, I think, while I was there. I thought there was fifty-two, so I might have missed one. No, there was only one.
I think there was just one.
Was it just one? Yeah, so it's not... It's interesting because you hear the Ed Commission's budget and you see where, like, what they're looking at and the issues that they had with especially their system. That was a big topic of conversation. It was not... It was not difficult. It was only one.
And it's one month?
I can do it again because it's only... It's only one, so I can... Or two. I can do two.
The... In lieu, if one of the members is unavailable to attend, then is your...
Yeah, because they were looking for you when I said not by was officially, but that's good to know, yes.
We do utilize Ed Services Commission for services, right? For certain things, yeah.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Yes. If there's nobody else that's dying to say that, I'm thinking Ms. Palasek's here. I don't know.
I could stay.
It's a recommendation that the board appoints Tina Palasek as representative to the Sussex County Ed Services Commission. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Vote on them.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay. Uh, no. Sorry, I'm going to move these separate. Six is a recommendation that the board declares its committee structure as follows, and those committees are as listed. May... I'll make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Number seven is where it says, "Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of Public Law, 1975, requires certain public bodies to comply with provisions of Section 1 of said act. Our proposed meeting schedule is as follows." And those are the dates for the entire year that we will advertise, including our reorganization meeting for next January of the year, roughly a year hence. Just a couple of notes. Our January meeting is the fourth weekend of the month because we're having a reword early on. And part of that meeting, we had already determined, we're going to have an NJ SBA training session immediately after the meeting opens and then executive directly after that. So, we'll start at the same time, but we'll have plenty to do. That may be a little bit longer meeting than...
We'll also have our auditor here to present the...
Oh, right.
...the school law.
And then, there's a couple of other modifications to some dates based upon the budget schedule and public hearing on SSBS. So, there's another section in the back. It is now therefore resolved that the board's schedule of regular monthly meetings shall take place on the fourth Tuesday of the month unless otherwise noted in the High Point Regional High School Cafeteria Annex, opening at 6:00 PM and then immediately entered into entering into executive session, and will reconvene a public session at 7:00 PM. So, I'll make a motion on number seven. May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on the schedule? Vote on this.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. All right, let me see if I can move a few of these together now. Oh, eight is code of... Actually, let me move eight separately because it's code of ethics. It's a recommendation that the board approves the Code of Ethics for school board, Robert's Rules of Order, and parliamentary procedures for all meetings as follows. The Code of Ethics... I don't know if I need to read this because all the members, I believe, were provided copied. Was it part of the thing they signed? Or if not, we're definitely going to get one with our ethics training at the January 28th meeting. So, it is as listed in here. You will see that, the board members, you'll see that frequently in training and everything else coming up, so feel free to read that whenever you're interested in that. So, I'll make a motion on number eight to accept those. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, how about now items nine through nineteen? Nine is a recommendation to designate New Jersey Herald as a Sunday Herald as the official newspapers. Ten is a recommendation that the board designate the property at Bank as the official depository. And eleven is a recommendation that the board approves a principal's petty cash fund for $500 and the superintendent's petty cash fund for $150. Individual warrants eligible for reimbursement may not exceed $75 per receipt. Item twelve is a recommendation to improve the fee schedule for photocopies as listed. Item thirteen is a recommendation to approve a $3 transcript free for alumni requests. Item fourteen is approve the following list of board accounts and their signatories, and that is listed in the table there. Item fifteen is a recommendation to authorize the use of a signature stamp for the board president, superintendent, board secretary, and treasurer. Item sixteen is a recommendation that the board authorizes the school business administrator as custodian of board of education records for open compliance and as the chief financial officer, investment officer with approved depositories, public agency compliance officer, purchasing... purchasey... purchasing agent with a quote threshold of $17,500, transportation contract threshold of the same $17,500, and all other bids threshold $44,000. Also, to maintain appropriate bonding as required by state statutes, also to make telephone, wire, and electronic transactions of board funds, and also to invest board funds at the most advantageous rate in compliance with all state laws and regulations. Item seventeen is a recommendation that the board authorize the school business administrator in consultation, in agreement with the superintendent, to process line item transfers in compliance with required rules per S-1701 and A-3680 between board meetings through December 31st, 2025. And item eighteen is a recommendation that the board authorize the school business administrator in consultation, in agreement with the superintendent, to process payment of bills between boarding meetings in accordance with 18A as listed, also through December 31st, 2025. And finally, nineteen is a recommendation that the board approves all bylaws, policies, and regulations that they be hereby continued in force through December 31st, 2025, subject to revisions as recommended by the superintendent. So, I'll make that motion on nine to nineteen.
Second.
Any comments? I just want to note on item nine, we have historically always... Just want to note on item nine, we have historically always designated New Jersey Herald, Sunday Herald. There was a recent legal change in that they have, I believe, until March, it's a temporary stopgap measure, that we are allowed to use newspapers that are discontinuing their print operations, so long as they post those notices on a publicly accessible website. So, it could be any of them, but I guess we'll stick with the Herald until they maybe no longer exist, but... Okay, that was my only comment. Any other comments on nineteen nineteen?
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. How about twenty through twenty-four, actually, I think it's the end. Twenty is a recommendation that the board approves all job descriptions, subject to revisions as recommended by the superintendent through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item twenty-one is a recommendation that the board recognizes the following bargaining units and contractual agreements, the High Point Education Association and the High Point Administrators Association. Twenty-two is a recommendation that the board authorizes the board president, superintendent, or designated act as board secretary as appropriate. Twenty-three is a recommendation that the board approves appropriate bonding of the school business administrator in amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and the treasurer of school money is in the same two hundred and ninety thousand dollars as required by statute. And item twenty-four is a recommendation that the board approves the following resolution to authorize contracts with approved state contract vendors or boards of education pursuant to New Jersey State. NJSA eighteen A as listed, effective January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and that is as listed, I'm gonna read that entire resolution. So, I will make that motion on those items.
Second.
Okay. Question or discussion?
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. We do have two action items under personnel. I will move both one and two, which is in our agenda, together. One is a recommendation by the superintendent that board of education approves to terminate employee one three five seven, effective January seventh, twenty twenty-five. And item two is a recommendation by superintendent that the board of education approves Mr. Timothy McClure as a teacher of chemistry for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year at the appropriated annual salary of seventy-seven thousand six seventy-four on the twenty-three, twenty-four teachers' salary guide. This will be effective upon release from his current issues. So, I'll make that motion on one and two. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion on that? We'll vote, please.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Palasek?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay. No more action items, so we have typically, for our members, we typically have two public comment sections. One at the beginning is limited to agenda items, and the second one, that is not limited to just the agenda items. So, I will now make a motion to open for, well, we don't need a motion, we only need close. So, we'll open for public comments now, same rules apply as in the prior. I don't see anybody in the room here for in-person comments. We have a comment? Yeah, I saw two. Oh, so hopefully, I get... Those are two. It's the same person, it's Roger and Nate, the first and... Oh, okay. So, I can look at the second one? Yep. Okay, so the comment is from, this is Megan Horniak, Lafayette resident and High Point Football Club president. I'll go ahead and read her public comment. "Good evening, the High Point Football Club is inquiring where the money winnings from the T-Mobile Friday Night Lights sweepstakes has been or will be allocated. The pretense of the contest made the impression that any winnings should be used to improve the football field. While we realize many areas in athletics could benefit from the winnings, there are for sure areas of the football field that could use improvement. The High Point Football Club does many fundraisers and events to help the football team. However, other sports and events are held at the field that could benefit from some improvements with the funds from the sweepstakes winnings. Cheerleading, track teams, night games, for many other sports, and the potential new girls' light football team would all benefit from the space. Upgrades to the sound system and scoreboard would be appreciated. Thank you, Megan Horniak." She can sign, High Point Football Club president. So, Ms. Horniak, I don't have an answer for you on that as of yet. Be sure that we research that and get an answer back to you.
We'll have an answer for you for the next board meeting, which is three weeks from now.
So, within three weeks. So, that's the only public comment?
Yeah.
Thank you for your public comment on the twenty-nine. If there are no other public comments, may I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, okay. So, I'll, I guess, take a motion to adjourn. May I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
There's a lot of seconds on there.
Yeah.